All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here to speak tonight? We'll address the senior center later. So, outside of the senior citizen, do we have any updates from citizens? Okay, council members, any updates? And city staff? Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda and take a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion from Iker, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Groko. Any question or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We don't have anything for public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to eight. Communication requests and petitions. You'll see the under eight A, we have a thank you to the Gaylord Surtoma Club. They're sponsored swimming lessons this year. There's information about the cancer cruise coming up on June 7th. And eight C is a Forever Young Senior Center. So at this time, you want to start by inviting Lynette up?
Whoever's going to speak on behalf of the group?
Okay. Please come up to the podium, then Avis, and just introduce yourself for the record. We also ask that people give their address, so just your name and address.
Okay, I'm Avis Klukas and I'm currently president at Forever Young Senior Center. And we have some concerns concerning our facility. As far as safety, because we do not have a proper handicap entrance. Accessibility is very difficult. We've had requests from several wheelchair people that cannot get into the building and partake in any of our activities. Parking is also a very, very big concern because the street past the center, the traffic, truck and semi-traffic is just atrocious. And it's dangerous for our senior citizens when they walk on the sidewalks or try to cross the street with walkers or canes. It takes a little bit longer and the trucks are not watching. Space is another concern of ours. I mean, we're okay right now, but our membership has increased to forty-five. Fifty is about maximum we can house for any activity whatsoever. And that's our big concern at this point. So we are hoping that the city will help us find another location with handicap bathrooms, handicap accessibility, and parking, a little more parking that is currently available because sometimes they will be parking a couple blocks away. And it's real difficult for people to come. And, and we feel that we've been a viable part of this community that we feel we're entitled to have a better location. So that, at this point, is our big concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Avis. Do we have anyone else here that would like to talk? Okay, Cheryl, come up and if you can give your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Messner. I live at two twenty High Avenue in Gaylord. I'm here representing my husband, Michael, and my mother, Fay Leyden. We're members of the current Gaylord Senior Center. All of us support a new and improved center. My mother and I both participate in twice-weekly exercise program and it's very beneficial to everyone there, both physically and mentally. My mom doesn't miss a class. However, we've outgrown the current facility and we really need a safe place. So please consider a new and improved senior center for Gaylord. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Is there anyone else? Okay, I went and toured it on Friday. Lynette was nice enough to show me around and show me the accessibility and we were able to talk briefly, so I appreciate that again. It was, it was good to see it. I, I feel that maybe the best thing to do is, we can talk about it as a council, but does our buildings committee still meet?
We haven't for some time.
Okay, I mean, would that be appropriate to maybe reconvene and invite a couple of the senior center members to maybe consider other options and bring back, bring it back to the council at a future date? Are, are other ideas?
That would be an option.
I definitely think that we need to address it somehow so as however we decide to get together and meet on it, but that we do follow through and, and try to find something that might be a little bit more suitable for them to meet.
Yeah, I mean, just from my brief visit on Friday, I think everything Avis and Cheryl described is very accurate, so it does seem like we need a more space and better accessibility. Okay?
Maybe, just, just so I'm clear, is that the direction of the council then, that we would?
Do we have consensus that maybe that's a good place to start? Or again, if anyone has any ideas, I'm open to it.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, have kind of a subcommittee come up with some ideas and that way we don't have to sit here and spitball for half an hour.
Is that building committee, does that talk about current buildings owned by the city? Or is it for something like this?
I think it's kind of up to your discretion as far as how.
My question was, is the building committee that exists right now, is it for just our city buildings and improvements that need to be made? Or is it for a project like this?
I think it could be for, for this. Because it would be a facility that the city would be renting or owning, whatever, wherever this leads to. So yes, I think it could, it would be a fit.
Perfect.
Yes, everyone?
I have a question. Are the meals on wheels still delivered out of the senior center? And does that have to be a consideration as far as having kitchen facility in the new building?
Yes, that was just a question about meals on wheels and if that needs to be taken into consideration with a new facility or a different facility, having space for that. And yes, that was the answer for those that didn't catch that maybe.
And that'd be something for the building committee to figure out and give us a recommendation, I think.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, is the council okay with that plan?
Yes.
Consensus moving forward? Okay? Well, it sounds like we have a plan and someone from the city will be in touch with to coordinate some of that research looking into moving forward. So, thank you all for coming tonight and.
Is there somebody from this group that we should be communicating directly with or?
You call the center.
Okay, just one thought.
Well, thank you. There's nothing else? We can move on to our department and committee reports and action items? If, if people want to leave, you are free to leave. You're welcome to stay, it's up to you. Yes.
Don't maybe just wait a little bit?
Yeah, we'll give them time. Okay, under our department and committee reports and action items, we can start with nine public works. Ty has several things on the agenda, so invite him up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The first thing I have is just to get this out of the way because it was put on, put on hold a couple meetings ago about the line tracer. I was able to find a used transmitter to replace our broken one. It was a company that took trade-ins for new. We bought it for five hundred bucks, so, and it works fine. So we've tried it a couple times, so that's all taken care of. So we don't have to worry about that.
That's good, thanks.
Thanks for finding that. Thanks for finding that.
Yeah. The second thing I have is street maintenance for mastic repair. This is for Sibley Avenue between Fourth and Sixth Street. We all, everybody kind of knows that's in need of some repair. The Public Works Department usually cold-patches that street, but it doesn't last long, everything reappears every spring. This year, we'd like to repair it by using the mastic the same way we repaired Third Street last year. We did receive two quotes and the bargain quote there for eighteen thousand dollars is actually their quote from last year that we didn't come, we didn't do because we didn't have in our budget. I did call him and asked him if he wanted to update that quote and he said, no, that quote is fine. And we also got a mastic quote from Nielsen Blacktop for sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. We didn't even know they did mastic until last year when they were doing repairs on the road. So they, we kind of, that came up in conversation. I also, while Nielsen was here, I had him give us a quote for the half a block on Second Street over by the First National Bank. That potholes out really bad and we've cold-patched that several times every year and it just potholes out. So he gave me a quote for that for forty-five hundred dollars. Compared to last year, we did twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars worth of repairs on Third Street. So just asking council, either either the sixteen thousand dollar repair or include that half a block for twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five from Nielsen Blacktop. And we have fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars available right now in that fund.
Looking for a motion to approve mastic repairs on Sibley Avenue and Second Street South and to award the job to Nielsen Blacktopping in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Just a quick question, isn't Sibley Avenue, didn't we talk about that recently in street improvement projects or?
Yeah, it's about six, eight years at least down the line yet. So, this is kind of a, kind of like Third Street, hold it together until we can repair it, yeah.
Ty, are you going to go to the curb this time versus like Third Street?
This street we will, yeah. Yeah, it'll go from curb to curb, yeah.
Did, did they say anything about it being on concrete? Because I believe that's concrete, ain't?
It's concrete underneath, yeah. So that's why you see the cracks are so straight. It's where all the old saw cuts for the concrete are. For this mastic, it's got some flexibility, so it's able to move back and forth and kind of stay together longer.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be a problem?
Yeah, it should be good, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the mastic repair in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. A motion from Padia and seconded by Iker. Any further question or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we can move to nine C three, crack sealing.
Yeah, so this is just a request. We did fifteen thousand dollars worth of crack sealing last year. We're kind of trying to catch up a little bit. And I'd actually want to amend this a little bit because we had our first seal coat bid come in and it was eight thousand dollars less than we budgeted for. So we'd actually, instead of fifteen thousand, we'd like to do twenty thousand dollars of crack sealing this year throughout the town. And we do have, like I said, that's from the same line item budget, line four hundred.
With the twenty thousand dollars, how do you think? What kind of shape will that put us in citywide as far as cracks?
It'll catch us up quite a bit for, for twenty thousand. I think we got another year, maybe two, to be completely caught up with that amount. I mean, we fell off it for a couple of years that we didn't do any because the company that we usually had do is kind of a mom and pop operation, especially during the pandemic. I think they lost all their work, their help. And I don't even, I don't think they're in business anymore. I've tried to contact them several times, so. I was trying to find somebody local that was reliable, that knew how to do the that stuff, so.
We would come back with quotes that he received then for your approval, award a quote later.
Okay.
We still have to go up for quotes on this, he's just asking for. An amount, yeah. So what we usually do when we send out for bids for crack sealing, is we say, we have twenty thousand dollars available and they give us a quote for how much per pound they can apply, so.
We need a motion to approve crack sealing for twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion from Padia, do we have a second? Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, twenty twenty-five road repair notes?
Yeah, this, these are just some notes. Last year, seal coating, we seal coated fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine square yards. This year, we'll be seal coating eleven thousand one hundred and fifty square yards. The second part of this is, the city has approximately thirty-six thousand dollars in road repair monies from the state of Minnesota's Small Cities Assistance. We're kind of, and it needs to be for road repairs. So we're kind of looking towards Sibley Avenue west of Sixth Street. There's some bad spots down there by Dale Frowning's place and the other blocker is starting, they call it the patchwork road that's been patched a hundred times, but there's spots in there that are kind of coming apart a little bit. We'd kind of like to target that area to try to clean that up. And the last thing, just waiting for a patching quote from a second company for Third Street. There's two areas on the west side of that road by some driveways that are really pitted out really bad. Those need to be cut out, dug up and patched. Just waiting for a second company for a quote for that. Last thing I have for this, this just off the, this is, has to do with Alex. He passed his, took and passed his CPO for his aquatics certification and in May, he will be taking his Class D wastewater license test. That's all I have for that.
Thanks for the updates and that's good to hear that Alex has done with his.
Yeah, yeah, and it's in, actually in Mankato, so it's really close.
Oh, nice.
Ty, I have a question pertaining this road. What, why patch it versus doing that mastic on that road?
This one, it's actually, it's a big hole. There's a couple of big holes instead of just cracks. It's actually muddy in that spot, so I actually have to cut that. It's, I think they're, I can't remember what the exact dimensions are, but they're pretty good sized patches. So they actually have to dig it out, put a little gravel back in and then blacktop asphalt over it, yeah, instead of.
Will all the cracks on that street be filled then when it's done or just the patches?
Just the patches.
Okay.
Anything else for us?
I don't think so. I know we can talk about the I and I. I don't know if you shared that, that folder. So I put a folder on the city's Dropbox of all the, the tiles we found. Every folder has its own address, has the report and a couple snapshots in there. I decided to put snapshots instead of the whole video just because of space. So you're more than welcome to log on that and, and take a look at it. If you got any questions, definitely give me, ask me. Because I got, the book, the binder is about that thick of all the reports.
You said you put that on our Dropbox?
Yes, it's on the, I think it's in the website folder.
Okay.
I put it in there to kind of, I didn't know where, didn't want to interfere with the meeting stuff, so.
So those addresses that you know have broken in to that clay pipe?
Either they're broken in or a lot, there are several of them that when they put the, hook the clay tile up, it's actually a factory-made why, that they're made to split off.
What do we, what do we do from this point? Are we going to start sending out letters then? Is that what's?
If it's okay, what I'd like to do is then bring this back on our next meeting on May 7th. After you guys had a chance to go through and look at that folder, get familiarized with it and then we'll have a discussion about the next steps.
So we're looking at originally, like, wasn't it twenty, twenty-one? People you were sure had broken in, was that the right number?
About thirty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
And then those other?
There's about forty of them, they couldn't even get into the line. And I gotta, I gotta review that video too.
Is there going to be a plan for those forty then?
Yeah, we gotta come up with something to.
Will that be at the next meeting as well?
Also talked to a plumber too, just on some options as far as residents and us, what, if there's any options of types of repair. So I'll do a little more research on that, that end too, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Ty.
Yep, thank you.
Next, on our department, we've got city engineer. So Justin can come and talk with us about a couple different things.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just by way of introduction for those watching on TV, Justin Black with SEH, serving as city engineer. The, the project that's in front of us this evening is not an engineering project, but an architectural project. Just going back in time a little bit to this winter when we reviewed the city's capital improvement plan and looked at future projects. One of them that rose to the top was the public works facility. It's been something that the city has talked about for, for quite some time. And we identified that as a project that would likely be constructed in twenty twenty-six. So in order for us to start the planning process and be able to bid this project this upcoming winter, to get bids when contractors are looking for work, we've come, come to the council with kind of the starting point of the process and, and that's engaging us to start putting together plans and specifications. In your council packet is a proposal from Brian Bergstrom. Brian's an architect at SEH that I've worked with on a number of projects. And I had a chance to set up a meeting with Brian and Ty and Steve to talk a little bit about the project so Brian could become familiar with it. So in that proposal is architectural services for developing plans and specifications for the building, which right now we're assuming is about a sixty by a hundred and ten foot building. We did complete some cost estimates last winter, about one point two to one point four million is the cost that we estimated for that project. So because it's over the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold for a city project, the city will need to advertise this and get bids on the, on the public market. So we need to put together a bid package so contractors can bid on it. Within our services, not only architectural, but also structural, mechanical for the heating system and then electrical. And then there's also, there is a civil engineering or city engineering component with the sanitary sewer and water service hookups. So I'll be doing those work in coordination with, with Brian Bergstrom. And then there's some storm drainage that we're going to do on the site to improve the drainage, not only for the new building, but also for the existing building. Our services, the way we packaged it up, it's not only the, the construction plans and bidding services, but it would take us all the way through construction, the construction administration and working with the contractor as they're building the project. So we have a proposal in, in the packet for just our services, which is eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And then you'll see two other proposals in there for services related to the project. One is from the local surveyor, EG Rudensons, to complete the surveying. We need to do some topographic surveys to get some elevations out there. We also want to identify the property line where that's at. So we know what proximity the building will be to that west property line. Their proposal is for two thousand dollars. And then Braun InterTech, the cities, the firm that the city has worked with in the past for soil borings and geotechnical services. They'll be completing three soil borings out of the site so we can determine if there's any soils corrections. And they'll also be providing a report with recommendations about the foundation of the building to make sure that we're meeting code. So all of these things packaged up together, I think probably best to make three motions, one for each, Steve, or?
Yeah, that's how I.
Okay, so with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions about any of the three packages, if you will, but otherwise this would kind of be the kickoff point to start that planning process.
I got a question on the drawing here. Everything's laid out where everything would be. Is having space to work on things not an issue? Maybe Ty needs to answer that. Having like a space to work on equipment? Because I know you guys do a lot of work on the equipment and as it is now, you kind of got everything laid out where all the equipment's going to be, but there's no open room for like shop space.
I just included that in there, that concept. It's just a concept, drawing.
So, yeah, so the, the actual, the three, on the, on the new shop, the three doors on the left-hand side are all the same size as our biggest door. So with the space provided in there, yeah, we'd have plenty of room to work on the bigger equipment. And the, the other side for the pickup, on where the pickups are, that's kind of where we want to have our, our main tool accesses. So, yeah, we're working on, and this space is actually be a lot easier than what we have now, yeah, so.
So would you just have to be moving some stuff around to make space?
Yeah, just if we were working on something, we'll just shuffle something to the front or to the back, yeah. Because right now, if we work on something, sometimes you got to move it in there and then you're stuck in that spot and you can't move it. It's hard to get other stuff out of the way, you know, because everybody's trying to squeeze into, there's three different pieces of equipment trying to go through one door. That can be a kind of a, that's the difficult part of it, yeah, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve SEH's Public Works Building Project Design and Construction Administration Services proposal.
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Padia. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. Justin, do you have like a timeframe when you think you might have the plans completed by?
Our goal is to have them wrapped up by this fall so that we'd be ready for a winter bid opening. And as the plans progress through the design phases, we'll be having review meetings with Steve and Ty to, to look at the different aspects, much like we do with a street project. And I guess it'll be up to you, Steve, if you want us to come back to the council at some point to review maybe an updated plan from what you've seen tonight, if there's any changes, so. But yeah, it would be, work through this fall and then a bid opening this winter.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next motion is to approve EG Rud and Sons Public Works Building Project Surveying Service Proposal.
So moved.
Motion by Padia.
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any question or discussions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried. Final motion is to approve Brown InterTech's Public Works Building Project Soil Borings and Geotechnical Engineering Services Proposal.
So move.
Motion by Rose, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko, any question or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we can move on to Lake Titlow Dam washout area repair.
Justin, before you run on that, I have like a little alibi here, I apologize. Do you have a, a completion date in mind, like where the, when the work would be done, so for planning purposes?
I don't have an exact completion date, that's something that we'll, uh, develop as we develop the plans as a, a schedule. And we'll come back to with, with that more specific schedule. I guess right now I'd say generally speaking, summer of twenty twenty-six is when we hope to complete it. Uh, moving to the next agenda item for the, uh, Lake Titlow, um, washout repair, I'm gonna share a few photographs here, if I may. There you go, and perfect. So these are the same photographs that are in the council packet. Just to give you a, a little background, um, a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Steve, Ty and myself were out on the, uh, the site, the, the dam site. We were looking ahead to, uh, identify the dam location, uh, for the, uh, the grant proposal, for, um, for a legal description. And when we were out there, we noticed something that didn't look quite right, and I'm actually gonna share the next photo with you. This is what we saw when we were out in the site, there wasn't any water coming over the top of the dam. Uh, the dam is straight ahead, that rocky area. But there was water coming from the side of the dam, uh, and not over the top of it. So we thought that was, uh, something that didn't look quite right. Steve actually had a photograph from when he was out there last summer, this is summer of twenty twenty-four. And, and you can see here, this is more of the typical operation of the Lake Titlow Dam waters trickling down over through the, uh, the broken concrete there. What we discovered when we took a closer look at what was happening is that, um, I'm gonna take a look at the aerial photo here, there was a, a washout in the bank south of the dam, north is up here. Uh, this white area is actually the, the dam rapids, if you will, where the water spills over into the county ditch system where my cursor is. And when we took a look, the water was coming in down at the base of the dam and there was a, a washout or a channel that wrapped around to the south side of the dam, quite a ways away from the dam itself. And the water was running through that channel around the outside edge of the dam. Steve had contacted the Minnesota D N R and the local hydrologist from Hutchinson, L. Gleisner, came out and visited the site with us, uh, about a week later. And here's some photos of that washout. So you can see the lake is off to the right-hand side here and this kind of grassy area is the lake bank. And you can see the water's cutting through that bank and then here's kind of a channel through the woods, where the water's running around the dam. Uh, here's another picture of that washout, again, this is south of the dam, uh, where it's running through the woods and, and washing out. This is another picture of, uh, when we came back a week later, um, the water level had gone down some already. Uh, this opening here, um, is about ten feet in width, uh, where the water's coming through. Share maybe a few more photos. Again, this is part of that washout area, this is where it's coming in at the base of the dam. Let me zoom in a little bit on this photo. So this kind of gives you a sense of where the washout is, the top of the dam is off to the left-hand side of the photo and it's probably about, um, maybe a hundred yards, uh, to the south where the washout is actually coming through the bank of, of the, uh, of the lake. Uh, just another view of the top of the dam, uh, maybe zoom out a little bit, looking down towards, uh, the county road is in the, in the, uh, back, background there. And then, um, the final picture, just to give you some scale of what the dam looks like. That was honestly the first time I've been out on top of the dam with no water flowing over the dam, you could actually walk out and stand on top of it. And it gave us an opportunity to take a closer look at, uh, what that dam sill structure looks like and, and review that with the D N R. Going back to the washout, um, the D N R, uh, did, L. Gleisner of the D N R did provide direction as to, uh, what needs to take place. Repair needs to be made, uh, of that washout and, uh, in the packet, uh, is, uh, the, uh, the email message that, uh, L. provided, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but essentially, uh, he said the repair needs to be made and it needs to be made as soon as possible. We had asked if this is something that could wait until the dam project is completed in two years and the, the response was no, it needs to be, uh, made now, the repair needs to be made now. What L. told us, uh, needs to be, needs to happen in order for us to make that repair are two things. First, uh, we need to amend, uh, the dam permit, uh, that the city currently holds. So the city currently holds a permit for the dam structure, we need to amend that in order for us to make the bank repair. And then we need to submit a plan on how that repair will be made. I don't envision this being a very extensive project. Our discussion out on site is just to repair that one specific washout area, uh, which is about ten feet in width, just at the bank. Uh, the thought process is, is try to minimize cost right now because the city's not working within any, uh, funding source for this. So we'd make that specific repair and then see if, once we get into the dam project, if there's some other dam funding that could be used or other funding available to help make maybe a more extensive repair to the bank. When we met with the Lake Titlow Committee, uh, there were some local historians there that said this has been a problem in the past. So this is not something new, uh, but it's happened in the past. And you could see evidence of that when we were out there, where you could see other washout areas. But our proposal would be to, to try to come up with a plan that would minimize the cost, a very simple plan to fix just that specific area. And then maybe take a broader look at this as we get closer to the dam project itself. So right now, I guess, um, that, we would propose to bring back, uh, a proposal, if you will, outlining those steps and what the cost might be. And then have you, uh, review that at a future meeting. Steve, anything else to add that I might have missed in the discussion?
Sure, I, I'll just add a couple things here. One is, um, where the washout area is located, we don't own the land, again. The G P L owns all the property out there, we just have the dam that we own. And then we have an easement that provides us access to the dam. That was part of the sale of the property back, I think it was in the nineteen sixties. And so we would have to work with the G P L, if we're going to be doing a repair, we would at least at a minimum need a construction easement. And it might be just something to consider as well, you know, as far as approaching the G P L and maybe they would assist in the cost of this repair, being it is their property. You know, it's, it's on the shore of the lake, but it is still abutting their property. And so maybe that might be something we could partner with them on. And it should be noted too, um, this is, yeah, we have a repair that needs to be addressed. But that shoreline along over there is not very high. And it's very possible that this could happen again. And so, you know, when Justin mentioned we might want to take a look at a broader look at this in the future, that's what he's, that's what he's implying. So we, we need to be aware of that, that this might not be the last time we're talking about this.
Lori, if I could ask you to, uh, allow me to share the screen, there's a couple of photos here that, again, in the packet, but, um, I didn't scroll far enough to share them with you. These are some aerial photos, some drone photography that, uh, was taken, I believe by, uh, was it Sibley County, Steve?
Jack Bushman, who's the Soil and Water Conservation Officer for the county.
So this kind of gives you a, a little bit better bird's eye view, we're looking, uh, southeast here, the dam is right here where my cursor is. And you can see where the water is channeling through the bank right over here where my cursor is, uh, this location and, and running down and around kind of in this direction. So again, a- as L. Gleisner noted in his, uh, message to us, the concern is, as this continues to erode the shoreline, it'll, it'll eventually draw the lake down because it continues to wash around the outside of the dam and that's why he wants, uh, a repair to be made sooner rather than later. Yes, absolutely, so there's a number of, of photos here, you can see it, kind of a zoomed in version of, uh, I can maybe zoom in a little bit further of the water actually, there we go, you can kind of see it, uh, pouring through that open portion. Uh, again, right now, our approach with the D N R would be just to try to plug just this immediate area. Uh, that's what we'd be looking at doing, uh, and not trying to fill in this entire channel, that might be a future project. Uh, I'm glad Steve mentioned, uh, that the rest of this is very low lying. Uh, when we were out there walking around here, the lake would only have to come up, uh, maybe a couple of feet in a big rainstorm and, uh, there would probably be more water running through some of these other areas. So by no means are we, um, proposing a solution that would be long-term, but nonetheless, we need to do something now to at least plug the gap, if you will, um, for that area. So I can maybe zoom back out again. These, these drone photos are really helpful. Uh, this is looking back to the west at the dam, here's the open lake. And again, you can kind of see the water coming in from the outside around the corner of the dam. So I guess with that, uh, we're just looking for a consensus from the council tonight to maybe take that next step for us to put together a proposal, come back to with what the steps might be and the costs associated with that and then, um, get an approval at maybe the next meeting to, to move forward and start engaging the D N R and going through the permitting process to get this fixed.
So basically, there'd be no cost right now, it's just a simple wanting to move forward with it?
Right now, there's no cost, at the next meeting, we'll share what, what the cost might be. Uh, we might not know the full cost of what the fix might be, but the cost to go through the steps of amending the permit and developing a plan for the D N R.
Just to kind of go back to this responsibility piece, so if a homeowner lives on that lake and the lake starts to erode their, into their yard, who's responsible for paying for that? Who would have to pay the homeowner is responsible, is that correct? Or would the city pay for that?
So I guess that's a little bit of a tricky conversation, but typically if there's erosion above the high water mark, then that is beyond the, what are called the riparian rights and that's the responsibility of the property owner.
The reason I'm asking if the, if G P L owns that property, we're gonna fix that whole area ultimately for them?
Well, I'm not suggesting that, but I, you know, we, we are looking at a dam project here and we're looking to replace the existing dam and we want to put in a dam that's gonna function for the whole lake. If we have a washout area or potentially other washout areas in the future that are bypassing the dam, then our dam is not functioning the way we intend it to. And so then we have an issue there. And so the idea here, you know, and the D N R is recommending that we address it, is that we would fix this, so then ultimately we would put ourselves in a position when we do replace a dam, that it'll be operating the way we want it to.
At what point in the planning process do we have that conversation with the G P L? To see if they're willing to, to, to help with the repair at all?
We could start having that at any time. Actually, Ken Seaman is here this evening, he represent, he's a representative on our Lake Titlow Committee and he's representing the G P L as well, um, so, um, he's in the know, uh, obviously. And so he would be our contact to start with anyway.
Any other questions?
I'm kind of where Tony's at with, I mean, just where, where does it stop? I mean, if it washes out somewhere else, it's like, you know, it's a concern for the D N R and stuff. To me, they should be coming in and doing something about it too. Why is it stuck on the city to, to fund that all and foot the bill for something like this?
I'd have to agree. To be honest, I remember that when I was younger, I think that washout's been there for a long time, you know? And if we're putting a dam in in a couple of years, you know, to what extent do we go and whose jurisdiction does it become?
And, and that line of thinking is why we did ask, can this wait? Can it wait, because, uh, we knew a dam project was coming in the next two years and, and again, the response we got was no, it, it can't. Um, I, I think there's some merit to the discussion here of talking with the G P L and seeing if there's some cost sharing options and how we move forward in the future. Not only with this repair, but with other repairs and maybe even a longer term solution. I don't know what that long-term solution might be, but it, it sounds like from a number of people, this has been something that maybe has been reoccurring. There's maybe been small repairs in the past, I don't know. But, uh, I think right now, it's just plugging that gap that I shared in the pictures so we can get ours, buy ourselves some time to have a, maybe a broader discussion.
It, it makes sense to figure out where we're at and what it's gonna cost to fill that out. But I also think that we also have that conversation with the landowners as well.
And the D N R.
And involve maybe the G P L in any conversations with the, I mean, with the D N R, with this project, I mean, they should be at, at the table, talking about this too.
Who said it can't wait?
The D N R.
Why? I mean, like, did he give you a reason or just simply not?
He did, uh, his concern is, is it, it's continuing to erode that bank and if we wait longer, it'll, it'll erode deeper. If we get some big storms, it'll erode faster, it'll, it'll reach a point where it'll actually draw the lake down and artificially lower the lake or, or drain it, if you will. How long that'll take, I don't know, but that's, that's their concern.
Yep, come up to the microphone, Ken. And just for the record, introduce yourself.
I'm on the board at the G P L there and, uh, we got a couple of members in there that thinks that, that dam and that overflow is no business of ours and don't want to spend any money. But that's not my concern. I would like to see something done there. Sooner or later, that's gonna have to be built up. And you're gonna have to get some pretty heavy equipment in there and I don't think you can go across the existing dam with any heavy equipment. So you're gonna have to come through the G P L and we're gonna have to, somebody's gonna have to move a few trees to get access to that area. The G P L has got money. I would be in favor of donating some money to it, but that's just me, not the board. But I'll, we'll talk to them and see what we can do, but it's gonna have to be done sooner or later. The sooner it gets done, the less cost is gonna be on the existing dam because when the new dam gets put in there, that area is gonna have to be built up and rip rapped so that it doesn't flood through again. But, uh, that's been their overflow for many years and it's getting worse, especially this spring with all the water we had, last spring with all the water we had and who knows what this spring is gonna be like, so. We can help any way, I, I think I can get some help from the D N R, from the game protectively, but no promises.
Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay. So right now, you'd want consensus to how to proceed?
That we would authorize, um, S E H to go ahead and submit a proposal for doing that repair where the washout is.
So we would bring a proposal back to assist with the amendment to the permit and a plan. And then you'd have the opportunity to prove that, we'd develop a plan that would get approved by the D N R. And then you'd have to secure an easement from the G P L to access and then, uh, get quotes from a contractor to do the work. So there's a couple of steps here, the first would be just, um, having us bring a proposal back to put together a plan and a permit.
I don't know, the rest of the council feels it, I'm okay with helping the G P L, you know, get the ball rolling, but I, I just. I'm okay with helping the GPL, you know, get the ball rolling, but I just don't want to agree to anything until we have that conversation about who's paying for what.
I don't think the decision you're making right now is a point of no return. We've got a couple intermediate steps here. One is to get us going, to get a plan and, and a permit approved. That would be a stopping point. The next stopping point would be after we get quotes from contractors, you would have to approve that quote. So then you would know what the construction cost would be. That would be a stopping point, if you will. If it was too much money, you could say, we're going to stop right here. So we've got a couple stop gaps, but Steve and I wanted to bring this forward since the, the DNR has sort of put us on notice, if you will, that we need to do something.
We just need consensus.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, moving on, under unfinished business, we don't have anything new business. We have resolution number 2025-08, Sibley County Food Share Variance.
This is an item that's coming, came through the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this month. Viral Schmidt is here this evening, very patiently, representing the Sibley County Food Share. They are asking for a variance to add on a four foot section to their existing cooler that's on the east side of the building. Back in 2020, 21, they received a variance to install that cooler and now they're going to be adding on a little bit to that cooler and because of that, they're not meeting our, the cooler variance before was for the side setback. They weren't meeting that, I think it was 10 feet at that time as well, it might've been 15. But anyway, so we're, they're asking for a similar variance again this round so they can do an addition onto that cooler. So basically, everything is in the packet, so I'll stop there if there's any questions.
What's the finished size of that addition? I guess I'm kind of confused on, so you're four feet by?
So, right now, we, it'll be, the finished project will be 24 feet. Right now, it's 20 feet long and it's eight feet wide. And so we want to add another four foot onto the cooler part. So we have a 12 by eight freezer and a 12 by, or I should say, eight by 12, or eight by eight refrigerator and we want to make it 12 by eight, both of them 12 by eight.
So that's, the add-on would be roughly four by eight?
Four, four by eight, yeah.
I just was hearing some of that.
To the north.
And this will be added on closer to the property line or just making it longer overall?
Parallel with the property line.
So you're already out that distance anyways?
Yep.
It's not going closer.
Not closer, no.
And the variance is only applicable to what they're requesting. It's not giving a variance for the whole length of the building per se. So it's only for their request.
Any other questions for Viral? And we're looking for a motion to approve resolution number 2025-08, a resolution approving a variance to the side yard setback for Sibley County Food Share. Motion from Eaker, seconded by Rose. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our 2024 financial statement from ABDO.
If you're able to present. Well, thank you. I'm Tom Olinger. I'm the governmental service partner with ABDO. I'll be going through the audit report here. Just to let you know, this is in draft version. We're still waiting on the, the fire relief information from PRA. They have a date, April 24th. They're supposed to be sending out the information and once we get that, we'll, we'll update the finals and do that, but it really shouldn't change any of the fund information on there. So most of the numbers should stay the same as we kind of go through that. So I'll kind of go through the overall audit results, talk a little bit about the general fund and the other governmental funds and then also talk about the enterprise funds. And then we have just a few trend comparisons year over year, just to kind of show how the, how the city is progressing. As far as the audit results, we will, we will have an unmodified opinion, which basically means a clean opinion. So we're following the GASB standards and gap for the report. As far as Minnesota legal compliance, we do testing on, on various state statutes, contracting, bidding, debt, investments and stuff like that, and we do that on a test basis and there were no, no instances of non-compliance related to Minnesota legal compliance. Couple of the audit results that we have, a couple of them that were the same over the previous years, we have the limited segregation of duties and the preparation of the financial statements. These are pretty common findings there, I think, related to the segregation of duties. Just kind of reiterate it to the board that it's important to review disbursements and kind of be, be active in that, in that as you go through, just because of the limited segregation that's there. We do prepare the financial statements, we do go through that with management to kind of go through the whole audit report and this is common with cities your size. It's just more cost effective to have us prepare the financial statements. There was one material audit adjustment this year. It was kind of related to some, some TIF activity that we, that we reported and how we reported it there. But I will say for this year, the accounting and the year end accounting was a lot better this year and I was very prepared. So we appreciate management kind of going through that process and, and making sure we kind of have everything together as far to the audit process. Getting into the, some of the financial information, so looking at the trend of the general fund balance compared to budget, the fund balance policy is about 40% of next year's budget. And as you can kind of see, over the trend, the, the, the budget has increased as, as to be expected and really the fund balance has also increased to keep it, keep us at that 40%. So we've done a good job of keeping it right at that, that, that policy level and we're just slightly above, which is really kind of the first time since 2020 that we've been just slightly above the, that fund balance policy. Which resulted in that increase was for this year, we did have a positive fund balance increase of about 175,000, mainly to, there was some additional investment income that came in. I think interest rates have gone up and we've seen that over, over what was budgeted and then some additional intergovernmental dollars and, and reimbursements that were there. We did see the expenditures over budget, but really between the intergovernmental and the reimbursements from some hail damage and stuff like that, that was, they kind of offset each other for that. So that resulted in the overall fund balance to be about 1.3 million at the end of, end of the year. Taking a look at the general fund revenues by type, we've seen kind of the, the overall taxes in the general fund have been decreasing. I think that has, that has been a shift over the last few years, few years to more of the debt levy, which was kind of needed there. So it was just kind of a shift of where those dollars are with that. And we'll kind of talk a little bit about that when we get to the debt service. The intergovernmental dollars did increase this last year compared to previous years. So that has been a trend up, but I think that, as we talked about earlier, some additional, additional dollars that came in for public safety aid and a few other ones that resulted in that increase there. General fund expenditures, you know, I think kind of taking a look at this, you know, really those expenditures have stayed pretty flat year over year, which, which is certainly good, good to see. I think you always kind of, kind of worry about the increase in costs continuing to grow and I think the city has done a nice job of kind of keeping those relatively flat year over year within the general fund. The special revenue funds, just a couple items to point out here. So this is the change year over year. So the special fire fund did have an increase of 69,000 mainly due to some additional donations that, that came in there. And then the small cities program did have a decrease in that fund balance mainly because there were several loans, forgivable loans that were distributed for this last year.
That's our commercial building.
Yep.
Brand program.
Yep. And then, then the other one is the nursing home proceeds, which is, has been kind of decreasing by that 50,000 and this was the intent of having those dollars annually pay down some of the debt year over year and that was a direct result of that, that decrease there. Taking a look at the, the EDA fund balance, I, you know, looking at that, there were a few, a couple TIF districts that were closed this year and then TIF District Two is, does have that negative deficit. So basically what that is and, and part of the material audit adjustment related to there is that there's an interfund loan that is, is to be paid back to the city from the TIF dollars there. So what we're going to see on that, we have that loan out there, what we're going to see is that deficit decreasing as those TIF dollars come in and get paid, paid for that. So that will be eliminated by, by future TIF, TIF dollars. The capital project funds, the, the capital improvement fund is about 1.2 million. That did have an increase of 250,000. That is, we saw the deficit in the TIF go up there. So the inner fund that's going here is that they're paying back the dollars to the capital improvement fund. So that had an increase because that will kind of continue to increase as those TIF dollars come over and that will be transferred over to there. The 2024 street had a positive variance from that and, you know, I think just kind of taking a look at the other one was the Oaks Lakeside Pavilion did close that fund this year as that project was, was completed. Debt service funds, you know, kind of taking a look at the overall trend with the graph there. In 2028 is kind of when your next bond does drop off. So if you kind of notice, the principal and interest is going to stay consistent. This is partly that shift of the debt service levy to kind of fund, fund these dollars here. So, you know, as new projects come on over the next few years, you know, kind of be aware of what that levy would look like as not a ton of debt is dropping off prior to that, to that date there. And we have the debt kind of extending out to 2042. The water fund did have a, did have a cash increase of about, about 200,000. So we're certainly generating some dollars there, which was, was good. So we can kind of see we are covering the debt payments. That, that gap between the 400,000 and the 1.3 is really kind of your capital reserves that you have in the water fund for any type of future improvements that you might have. The sewer fund, same thing, we did have, that's, the cash has been increasing and, and certainly kind of building up some dollars within there. We do have some capital reserve in there. You know, certainly this has been in good shape. Back in 2021, we were kind of at that basically operational levy. So that's kind of continued to increase going forward. So if any new debt comes on or any future projects, there's the opportunity to pay out of the reserves or you have enough cash flow to cover some of those debt payments. Stormwater, so with this one, the cash balances have been decreasing year over year. I think, you know, for this year, there was a little bit more of operational cost, which is the yellow, yellow one there and, you know, the debt has kind of stayed relatively sustained. So that kind of has pulled back to that operational level that we have. So, you know, certainly if there's more future projects or otherwise more operations, you know, that is something that we can maybe look at, you know, rates related to that. The previous three years, it's been kind of break even there. I can't remember, Steve, was there any like one-time expenditures for 2024?
Yes, I was going to share, you'll recall, we did the rip wrap project on the ma, Big Pond back over there. So that was a major project for last year.
Yep. And, you know, I think, you know, taking a look at even the, the previous, if you take that out, even the previous three years, you're really kind of break even of where your cash flow is with the, with the overall debt service and operations. The refuse fund has been, you know, slightly increasing there. Refuse fund is usually kind of a break even fund. It's not meant to generate a whole lot of dollars there. So, you know, really that's kind of hung right around that, that same level year over year. So I think, you know, with this, you know, the, the contracts related to that, if costs start going up related, related to that, just kind of make sure that the, the revenues are following accordingly. The overall taxes and the key performance indicators, the over, the tax rate year over year has stayed, stayed the same with a, with a slight increase in the overall taxes per capita. So it hasn't been any huge jumps within the, within that. You know, I think the, the taxes per capita has, you know, increased slightly, but it kind of follows along with the market value that, that you have to keep that tax rate flat. Overall, long-term debt per capita over the last couple of years has stayed also flat too. So, and, but kind of above the averages of what other, other cities your size are there. So, you know, continue to, to buy down some of that debt year over year and kind of keep reducing that will certainly help in that overall debt per capita. So with that, I would open it up to any questions you might have related to the presentation or any other questions you, you might have.
With regards to the capital improvement, we came up with that book on when we're going to have timelines for repairing our stuff. Are we on track, do you think, to, to go with the flow that's inside that book with, you know, replacing stuff?
Yeah, you know, I think you go back to where the, where the cash is, cash is at and I think this last year, there was about, I think $175,000 levy that we, that we had in that capital improvements fund. So I think that would be pretty consistent there. You know, I haven't specifically like laid it out and cash flowed it out. So, you know, I think you, you kind of take a look at that cash in that 801 fund and it's a pretty easy cash flow that you can do by saying, okay, what are we going to levy year over year? What's going to be paid out? I mean, there's pretty much two line items. What's going to be paid out and what's going to be levied? And, you know, kind of just see, because what happens is you're going to have ups and downs in that overall capital improvement plan. So I think just kind of making sure that that flows, flows accordingly on that. And like I said, I, you know, I can send a spreadsheet or something to, to kind of show that, but it's a pretty easy calculation to do and I haven't gotten the details related to that.
Maybe you're alluding to it, it's the, our financial plan?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's all laid out in there. It actually projects out what the levy increases would be as well.
Okay.
Equipment replacement schedule is there too.
It just seems like everything's going up in price, so.
Yeah.
It's concerning.
And we do review that on an annual basis and adjust accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, and I think that's it because you take a look at the assumptions. You know, the financial plan is based on assumptions and assumption, assumptions change and you have that, that adjustments year over year.
Perfect, thank you.
I just wanted to share, Tom mentioned, you know, management did a lot of preparation this year. That's really attributed to Lori Walz. She did a lot of work this year to try to kind of lessen the load on them and, and that's what they want to see. They want staff to take on a lot of that and do a lot of the preparation and get a lot of this stuff prepared for them and doing all the entries and stuff like that and she did a really nice job.
And it just kind of presents better financial information throughout the whole year too.
Thank you for your work.
All right, well, thank you and we'll, we'll finalize these once we get our final fire relief numbers. So, so thank you and if any questions come up, feel free to reach out.
Will do.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And tell Lori thank you too, from all of us. Okay, next on the agenda is 11C, Small Business Week Proclamation. Do you want to add anything or should I just start reading it?
Go ahead. Each year, we've been recognizing Small Business Week and this year, it is, it's a national program and it's scheduled for May 4th through the 10th this year. We plan to celebrate or recognize Small Business Week on May 8th with an event at Wakefield Pork. The Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the EDA Board to host that event and Don has set up a speaker from Region Nine to provide some information. So we're excited for that breakfast again. breakfast again.
Okay. This is the City of Gaylord Small Business Week Proclamation. The City of Gaylord recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit, spirit within our community, and whereas there are over 100 small businesses within the City of Gaylord, and whereas more than half of Americans either work, own or work for a small business, and create about two out of every three new jobs in the United States every year, and whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963, to highlight, highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the United States, Small Business Administration, and other governmental agencies, and whereas the City of Gaylord supports and joins this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, create jobs, and ensure our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, I, Don Krasinski, Mayor, along with the City Council members Lynn Groko, Scott Kufal, Leighton Rose, Tony Padilla, and Jessica Eager, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, shall be observed as Gaylord Small Business Week. Okay. So you need a motion to, oops, sorry, I have to go back to that. A motion to approve the City of Gaylord Small Business Week proclamation.
Still move.
We have a motion from Padilla, oh my gosh. We have a motion from Kufal, seconded by Eager. Any further discussion? You're available, come to the breakfast, it's always interesting every year? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else? Okay, then we will take a recess for a closed meeting. The meeting shall be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D regarding Parcel 32-0817.110 and consideration of the purchase of real, of real property.